So like 7:02, let's get started with the meeting tonight. If everyone can, if you can try and keep yourself muted unless you're talking or asking a question. I know it helps a lot with echoes and being able to hear each other. Gary Brinker is on the call as well, so if we have any other problems, he'll help. But let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Robin, would you go ahead and do the roll call?
I will. Stacy Alvarez.
Here.
Renee Tillman.
Here.
Thank you. Joanne Lachem.
Here.
Georgian McNabb. I see you, Georgian.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes, you're here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Nevada Smith.
Here.
Justin Collier. TJ Rains, thank you. I think there's a little bit of a lag for the unmute. TJ Rains.
Here.
Gil Zumwalt. Oh, I don't have Gil. I don't see Gil. Okay, so we do have a quorum.
Thank you. I think we have one public comment, Robin. Is that right, that you'll read?
We do. I received one public comment by email from Mr. Arnie Deanoff this afternoon. Dated December 8th, 2020, reference Public Comments, District Board of Trustees Meeting, December 8th, 20. Members of the Library Board of Trustees, during these trying times of COVID and meeting the demands of the public and community, I appreciate everything that staff and the library workers at all of the branches in our neighborhoods are giving their all each and every day. We and you as trustees owe these staff members a great deal of gratitude for serving us, the public of St. Charles County. We are all in this together. I understand closing the facilities for caution and limit the spread of the virus. It has been rough and tough on the community, finding new avenues, ways to connect, and ability to receive materials and information. I can speak from fact and observation that the staff at the Deer Run Library is doing the very best that they can do and meeting the requests of the public. Limiting public access to the library and computer is an asset and very difficult to get all of the things that you need to complete in one hour time. I would like to request that the District Director, Jason Cole, and staff look at expanding this time period and grant an additional 30 minutes to 60 minutes of computer time. Hopefully, this is acceptable to the experts of the county health department. The county council sure does not take this virus seriously or the advice of county public health and can be seen on video at the November 30th and last night's December 7th meetings. The past few weeks since Thanksgiving has been taxing, exhausting, and unprecedented for all employees of the City-County Library District. Tax Abatement, Chapter 100, RSMO. I would like the Library District to oppose the $45 million tax abatement project for Patriot LLC in the city of St. Charles. This is way too much of a tax break, asking for a huge tax abatement and giving up our tax dollars. What is the return on investment, if any? And then financial review. I would like to caution the Board of Trustees and the district to be ultra-conservative during these trying times of COVID. We need to maintain a fiscal responsible budget and spending habit. I ask that the Board of Trustees not take on any additional debt or major projects until the economy is stable and we figure out what effect COVID will have on our community this winter and through the spring. I wish each and every one of you a great holiday season and a great New Year in 2021. That we cherish what we have, our families, friendships, neighbors, and our great county. Very truly yours, Arnie C. Deanoff, Arnie CAC Deanoff, County Public Advocate.
Thank you, Robin. Next, we have reports and correspondence. The first thing is the financial report.
Oh, I am not seeing Julie on.
I just noticed that.
So, hey, Robin, maybe she's having trouble getting on as well.
No, she's there. Sorry.
Okay, never mind.
I just promoted her. I'm sorry. I was reading, so I wasn't watching the attendee list.
It's okay.
Okay, now she's on.
Hi, Julie.
There she is. Sorry.
Hello. You're just in time. We got to the financial report.
Yeah, great. So again, we're waiting on our taxes for basically our main source of revenue until mid-January. But in the meantime, we've received a little over $100,000 from the state of Missouri that we did not budget for in Fiscal '21. Just being cautious as far as their budget. We did just receive the $120,000 from CARES, state of Missouri, with regard to broadband, which is terrific. And I was just speaking with the St. Charles County Director of Finance. So we'll be getting additional reimbursement for COVID-19-related expenses through December. I'll be submitting those shortly, so I think that's a great thing. And then our other revenue, it does contain, unfortunately, two insurance-related incidents that we were reimbursed for. As far as salaries and benefits, we're running about 93%. You're seeing some of the impact as far as COVID. We're at a little over 200, and as far as FTEs, our budget was 213. So again, we're running at 93%. We're on target on budget for materials. You'll see we're a little over in the IT that is related to the broadband expenses that we were just reimbursed for. And then you're seeing our conservative approach as far as our operations, as far as what we've budgeted. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Julie? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to the Director's Report.
Thank you. Really just wanted to highlight a couple of things from the written report. Building projects continue to be on target. You see a picture there of the exterior of Cliffview. We now have the sign on the building. The monument signs into the development are up as well, so everything remains on target there. The lower picture is of the teen area at Katherine Lindeman, which is now completed. Unfortunately, that sort of got delayed in being introduced to the community because of the flood back in May. But we are now seeing movement there in doing the work on that's necessary for the waterproofing and such, and that's actually a little bit ahead of schedule even right now. So we are excited to have a light at the end of the tunnel there. Really, the main thing that I wanted to talk about, and we'll talk about it later on in the meeting as well, is I have some statistics there, keep going, on the scale back to an expanded version of curbside service that we moved back to on November 23rd. So at the time I put this together, we just had a little bit over a week in the book. So next month, I'll do a more comprehensive report of all the ways that we're serving people and have some numbers associated. But you can see here that we are still doing quite a bit of business at many of our locations in terms of visitors to the locations to pick up materials, curbside. Major difference between the service that we're offering now as opposed to when we were offering curbside service earlier in June is we are still offering computer access to the public. It's just on an appointment basis for one hour. And you can see there that Spencer Road, from November 25th to December 2nd, had 106 people take advantage of that. So all of our locations that are offering it are having people who are taking advantage of that. So that's really good, because that was a critical service that was missing before. So I'm glad we're able to do that now. And really, those are the highlights that I want to talk about. We'll talk more about service right now, later when we get to that agenda item. But happy to answer any questions you might have.
So Jason, the computer usage, they can get up to an hour of time and they just have to have a scheduled appointment?
Yep.
And do they do that by going to the website or contacting the branch?
They contact the branch.
Okay.
Jason, why does Spencer have the most access? Is it the biggest location?
They have by far more computers than any other location, so they're able to offer more at a safe distance.
Anybody else? Any other questions for Jason?
Nevada, I did have one question for Jason.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Jason, on the one-hour time limit, is there any extension of that time limit? If there's no one waiting or there are no other appointments after that?
Um, you know, I don't believe so. Lori, can you chime in on that?
I sure will. Because we really have just gotten past our second two and a half weeks into this, we have kept our schedule pretty clean in terms of offering one hour once a day so people can sign up a week in advance, so they could sign up for seven hours over seven days in one phone call or chat or email session. As we see the need and the requests fluctuating, we may indeed extend those sessions. But we have tried to provide as much access as we can to walk-up customers as well, which means if someone comes up to the door and would like to use a computer and we don't have an existing reservation, we're able to accommodate them at that moment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to kind of clarify from the public comment and the question about extending time for customers.
I'd like to comment. We went through a similar thing at the YMCA with our whirlpool and Asana. And in the beginning, it was more or less safer for us to stick to the one hour or the 15 minutes or whatever that time slot was. But after being now, I guess, six, seven months into it, you know, we allowed them to book consecutively. So that is something to think about, but just opening up and not knowing, you know, the way you're doing it is great for contact tracing, to be careful, be better safe than sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would also add one difference is from kind of how we were when we were open is the computer appointments are limited to St. Charles County residents or paid non-resident cardholders, so people who buy a card. This is something that, if you remember, I had spoken about sort of our neighboring library districts. Many of them had closed their doors, so we were seeing an influx of particularly people from St. Louis County at certain branches using computers. And if we were limiting to one hour and we were limiting that, we needed to make that available just to our own residents. So that is a change there as well.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Jason? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the statistical report.
Hey. Really, what I wanted to highlight from the statistical report is, you know, most everything is continuing to show what you would expect given the environment. One of the things that we really, I think, all organizations right now are thinking about is what types of things are going to continue in a post-COVID world. Like, and something that we're paying particularly close attention to here, and I think in libraries in general, is how will this accelerate people's use of e-media relative to print materials? And I mean, you see that we had our year-to-date change for e-media use is 24% up increase. And so for the longest time, when ebooks became available for libraries, they were very much increasing in use, but the numbers were still very small. So you would see, you know, triple-digit percentage increases in use, but the real actual numbers, they were pretty small. And some years ago, we kind of hit that 10% threshold, where 10% of our circulation came from e-media. And so it was really starting to become a significant percentage of our offerings and of our use. So what we're seeing now, though, is not only is it increasing, and as you would expect, in November, 21% of our circulation was e-media. So to compare that to a year prior, in 2019, November 2019, it was only 13%. And in 2018, it was only 14%. So I think, you know, we still have print books available. Our hours are curtailed a bit. But it seems that people have become used to and are making the choice to use e-media now. So I think what we're seeing is that trend will probably continue post-COVID. And it's kind of accelerated a little bit the movement toward electronic materials. And it's something that I think we need to be mindful of as we look at what the post-COVID library will look like in how we budget and how we kind of look at allocating those collection dollars between print and electronic materials. So that is really the thing that I wanted to highlight, but happy to answer questions.
Jason, on the new library cards, I know for Fiscal Year '20, like, it was basically about double what it was before. Do you attribute all that to COVID as well and people wanting to use the e-resources? Are us really working to get new library cards out there?
So a lot of that had to do with our migration to Polaris and purging the existing database, making folks who had, whose cards were blocked from fines from long ago. So there's a number of things there. So I think really what resonates with me is you can almost look at Fiscal '20 as an anomaly, but we're still ahead of Fiscal '19. So that's good. Lori, did you have anything else to add to that?
Got to unmute myself here. Excuse me. I think Jason is spot-on with his analysis there. I will say that one of the new initiatives that we are launching with the school districts in our county will potentially have impact on the number of new cards that we issue, because students will be able to use their student ID numbers for access to the public library, up to five items at a time for a checkout. So it could be that that's all they want to check out at a time, and so they'll just use their student ID. Or they might decide, oh, I like these five items, but now I think I'd like more. And maybe they will also get a public library card if they don't already have one.
And I will say too, I've sort of thought about this metric, this new library card metric, and how worthwhile it necessarily is long-term, because ultimately, don't we want everyone to have a library card? So new library cards, at some point, we want to decline, because we want everyone to already have one. So maybe measuring percentage of residents with a library card is actually sort of a more impactful measurement. But so that's something we're thinking about.
Any other questions on the statistical report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence.
So you have, in your packet, we received from the city of St. Charles a notice about a proposed industrial development, and that is from Patriot Machine. And then they did issue a revision to that, which we emailed out to you earlier. They just changed, I think, some of the calculations.
My apologies. I did not include the updated version in this packet, but I did email it.
But yeah, it was emailed, all of you.
Sorry.
Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. Did everyone receive the draft of the minutes from November 10th, 2020? And were there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
I did receive comments back from one trustee, and I did incorporate those changes, so.
Okay. Okay. Hearing no other changes or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, that was TJ?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second, too?
Renee, second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Onto the formal agenda, there is no old business, so we'll move to new business. And the first agenda item is 21-18, Fiscal Year '20 Audit Acceptance.
So yeah, there's no memo for that. My only comment would be, at the Finance Audit Committee meeting prior, the Finance Audit Committee did recommend to the board to accept the Fiscal Year '20 Audit.
Is there a motion with regard to approving the Fiscal Year '20 Audit as approved by the Finance Committee?
I'm motion to approve.
Okay, that was Renee. Thank you. Second?
Second, from Georgian.
Okay, thank you, Georgian. First and a second, all those in favor of approving the Fiscal Year '20 Audit, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? Cool, hearing none, the Fiscal Year '20 Audit is accepted. And the final agenda item is 21-19, Extension of Curbside Delivery Model.
All right, so I wanted to spend a little bit of time discussing in greater detail the model that we've moved to, that we moved to back on November 23rd, of really what we're calling an enhanced curbside delivery. And if you recall, back in March, the board did approve policy E465, which is public safety emergencies. And that policy delegated to me decisions about sort of limiting service to respond to public safety emergencies. And that's what we've been operating for this entire period since March. But I do think it is time that, you know, we take very, see, we don't, it's not an easy decision to limit services that the library offers. So I thought it would be good that we have a discussion here and that the board has a chance to weigh in on sort of the approach and if it chooses to vote to endorse that approach. Because this has gone on for some time. It will continue to go on probably. So I think it's just a discussion that we should probably have. So there's really a couple things that we decided when we made this decision. But first, I'll go over a little bit about, you know, what we're offering. And really, we are able to offer all of the library's core services right now. So you see in the bulleted list there, patrons can request specific items to pick up, but they can also just call the branch and say, I have a six-year-old who likes trains. Can you pick out 10 books on that? Or same with movie or music. So anything like that. Essentially, we're trying to offer patrons anything that they want that we can possibly offer, we will. So if they need printouts, if they need something faxed, we'll do that by appointment. We are doing reference service or information services via phone, via any number, email, chat, text. All of the ways that we were offering those services before, we're continuing to offer. We are continuing to offer virtual programming. We have Wi-Fi service available in the parking lot. And as I mentioned earlier, we are still offering computer access. So there still are people in the branches. It's just being done on an appointment basis. And so when we scaled back November 23rd, if you think back to, you know, when we closed in March, when we closed all of the buildings, we put a group of public service frontline staff and in particular, four of our general purpose branch managers in charge of formulating a return-to-service plan. And if you recall, we didn't base sort of scaling up services again on any sort of public health data or any infection rates or anything like that, because that's not our expertise. We leave that to the public health officials. But a key piece of any decision to change service would be listening to the recommendations of public health officials. Beyond that, it was what we could control in order to safely provide service. So we were able to increase service when we were able to ensure that we had enough protective equipment for staff, when we had rearranged our buildings to make sure that we could have physical distancing enforced, and we had plexiglass barriers put in place. The fourth sort of piece of that, though, is that we can ensure that we had adequate staffing to safely operate the facilities. And that is really what we're encountering now that really did sort of, I guess, was the thing that tipped the scale in favor of having to roll back. As I explained in the memo, in November, we had at some point in November, 72 staff were quarantined. So to put that in perspective, we have 298 staff total. So that's a quarter roughly of our staff at some point had to quarantine. And a good percentage of those were for 14 days. So I think we probably, until we experienced what that was like, we may have underestimated the amount of disruption that caused to our own operations, but then also to the public. So the first two instances where we had to have a number of people from one location quarantine, it involved, in both cases, we had to close the facility because we didn't have adequate staffing. Then we had to go about and look at what staff could fill in from other locations to at least provide curbside service in that case. All of that involved messaging to the public. It involved confusion among the public. They're coming to the location. The location isn't open. And so this has continued, and even this week, 16 more staff were quarantined this week at one location. And so I learned of that late, like after nine o'clock on Sunday night. So I look at, if we were operating under our normal, we would have scrambled to probably close that location in its entirety yesterday and had to pull staff from other locations in order to open the facility. So really, scaling back to this enhanced curbside service has really, it's the best option for us, I think, for the foreseeable future in order to ensure continuity of operations, that we can tell the public that, yeah, barring something really unforeseen, location's going to be open these hours tomorrow for these services. And we'll know that for the next day and the next day, because it lowers that critical threshold of staff that we need to operate that location for those services. And it also means that we can limit where staff is working. Staff can be limited to working at one location, and that is consistent with all of the advice from health officials about limiting the number of people that you have prolonged exposures to. So for us, just looking at, while we're in this period of higher infection rates, we know there's going to be more people that have positive for COVID among the staff or staff family members or acquaintances or whatever. We know that this is going to continue while infection rates are as high as they are. And so it would be our recommendation that we continue operating under this model during that period, because otherwise, it would just be like this just churning of disruption when staff need to quarantine. And that isn't good. I mean, I don't want to underestimate the And that isn't good, I mean, I don't want to underestimate the impact that that has on staff and just how amazing and flexible that they have been. But it does take a toll. And then, like I said, also on the messaging for the public, sort of always questioning whether the building will be open or not and whether we'll be providing services or not is difficult as well. So that's kind of really the main points that I wanted to make. But I'm interested in sort of how the board feels about taking action on a month-to-month basis. And I would recommend that we continue with this model through the January board meeting. So January 18th is the Monday after the board meeting. We can discuss it then, I can give you another report on where we are, how many people have had to quarantine in that month. And we can take it on a month-to-month basis. So I will open it up for questions or discussion.
Anybody questions or discussion?
I do, I have a question. I guess my question would be, aside from the letter that was read, how much flack are you getting from the public and the community on limited times and closing the facility?
Um, I know the branch managers themselves are getting most of it. I'll actually defer to Lori here in a second to see how much has trickled up to her. I did, I didn't, I have a call from someone to return that called here today. And it's interesting, and I didn't speak with her, but I spoke with the person who spoke with her. And, you know, she was just, I think, confused. Her question was, well, schools are open, so what's the difference? And to that, that did get me sort of thinking that, yeah, schools are open, but I know my daughter was in choir, but they're not doing choir this year. They're playing the ukulele instead of the recorder, thank goodness. And but so, yes, schools are open for that core sort of function that they have to provide. But they've made alterations, they're not open at full capacity, even the ones that are open. So I would say all of the, and actually, if LB is here, she can speak to this as well. I did not see a single negative comment on all of our social media posts, which it's social media, so that's shocking in and of itself. It was all supportive of.
That's accurate.
Yeah, so, okay, so yeah, there still hasn't been anything negative come our way on social media. And Lori, I don't know how many people you've spoken with?
Yeah, we have gotten some comments on our electronic reference interaction system. There have been a couple of questions about, you know, what does this mean? And how do I, how do I access what I'd like to use at the library? But in general, all the comments have been filled with gratitude and appreciation that we are maintaining services at some level that seems to be effective for most people. We did have one, I think it's in your board packet. One parent say how grateful they were that it got a little bit of advance notice so their team could, you know, fill up with their 100 items during this period. We really have heard very little negative. It's primarily very positive this time, especially in appreciation, not only of the library, keeping the public, the safety of the public in mind, but also there's been quite a bit of talk about protecting library staff and how important that is to the public that is giving us feedback. So I think that's been a little bit of a different approach that we've heard this time. And of course, we appreciate those kind thoughts very much. And it is an important piece, because when we see those quarantine numbers, that's a big chunk of our staff that had days of anxiety while they were waiting to see if they would develop the virus or some of the symptoms. And many of them had underwent testing. And, you know, it's been, it's been a very stressful time for them too. So I've been pleased with the public response, because it has been, oh gosh, overwhelmingly positive and supportive. There are a few people who question the validity of the virus and, of course, the validity of our actions. But again, we're usually able to help them get the services that they would like access to somehow, and that has helped.
I have a question, is there any core function that we're not providing by the enhanced curbside?
Um, I guess it depends on how you define core function. But if we're saying the core function is being able to check out materials, then I would say no. I mean, if you consider browsing the stacks a core function, then that's the main thing that's missing. So that, or just having a place to go and spend time. But beyond that, when you really boil it down to what the real core things that the library does, checkout materials, we're doing that, offering programming classes and events, we're doing that, offering computer access, we're doing that, offering information services, we're doing that.
And the programming and stuff that we're still doing, are we doing that by Zoom, or how are we doing that?
Yeah, virtually.
And then what is, what's St. Louis County doing on their process?
St. Louis County is still curbside only. They have actually just now rolled back to not being open at all on weekends. So we were the only area library open on Sundays prior. They are now not open at all, Saturday or Sunday. So they have scaled back even more recently. And actually, right around this same time, November 23rd, I mean, a week prior, I, if you had asked me, and people had asked me, that we had no plans whatsoever. And I think a lot of libraries were saying that to scale back. And by November 23rd, every single library that I talked to, no matter where they were in the continuum of services they are offering, we're scaling it back. Just because a lot, I think, in that, in that week, everyone kind of experienced what we did, just how difficult it is to address these things when they come up.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion from the board?
No, I think, I think you're doing a great job, and if they're commenting on social media, can't be.
Thank you.
Don't jinx it.
That's right. I just have one other question, Jason or Lori, in terms of the messaging, because I think that's also where people get confused before, because they weren't sure if branches were open. I'm assuming it is on social media, we have it on our website, we have it posted at each of the branches. Is that what we're doing, or are we doing anything else?
Yeah, LB, if you want to weigh in here as well, but I think you got it all.
I think you covered it all, yeah.
And direct emails, don't forget the direct emails, LB.
Yes, so we've done eBlast, continue to put it in our messaging. Anytime we're doing an all customer eBlast or even any of our targeted eBlast signage on the door for people to see from the parking lot, so they're not necessarily having to walk up to not be able to open up a door before they know. And then social is really the big areas.
Okay.
My business.
Yep.
Good question.
Yeah, go ahead, Joanne.
Um, Jason, is any of the information that we're providing to the public giving them any idea of what our criteria are for when we'll reopen to customers coming into the branches?
Not really, because like I said, it's not, you know, we're not using any sort of metric in terms of positivity rate or anything like that. It's really when, when, I would say, the number of, the frequency of large portions of our staff having to quarantine is reduced. I guess that's a hard thing to quantify or to say.
But in a sense, that is what we should be communicating, right? That at this time, due to staff quarantines, we're not open when we're able to more appropriately staff the branches, we look forward to reopening to our customers' physical presence.
Yeah, I think that's good. And the first part, we are saying, we are saying it's due to exposures. But I think that, that will help clarify, because I think that is the message that might be getting lost. Is this isn't, you know, this really is about us being able to maintain operations. So LB, you unmuted yourself, so.
That has been part of the messaging, was the, in an effort to keep all of the branches open instead of having to reduce any one area. That was, I can't remember how we worded it, but we did, we did address that, Joanne.
Hopefully, that's a message we keep carrying out.
Okay.
We'll make sure of it, thank you.
Just kind of, are you done, Joanne, or did you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, kind of in line with what Joanne was saying, Jason. So if we approve this to go through January 18th, I mean, what are, what are we looking at as a board? Or what are you looking at to determine, you know, resuming full services? Like, what are we expecting to look at in the future?
I mean, I really think it would be, probably, the most significant number is that number of staffs that had to quarantine, I think. I mean, that's the one that really drives it home, that in one month, we had a quarter of our staff quarantined. I feel like if we're there again come January, and a quarter of our staff had to quarantine, then we'll be in the same position. But if we start to see that it's smaller and smaller numbers, and we are able to maintain operations or increase operations, then that's, that's, I think, the most significant marker.
So no hard and, no hard and fast number, but looking at obviously the number to go down and what we, you know, do we have enough staff that is not quarantined? Because I don't know, I mean, if that number is in half, does it still mean that we have to roll back? Because that's still a significant enough number of the staff, I don't know.
I think it's kind of situational. Part of it is the time of year right now, that we know there's going to be other illnesses as well. You know, so whereas if we get a little bit further into the spring, that's less likely. So it's a different, I think it's a different situation, it's a different level of business.
Okay, but the other illnesses typically wouldn't have a two-week quarantine.
They wouldn't, but the point, I think we, if you have X number of staff quarantining, we have to assume we're also going to have however many staff call in every day. So I think that when you have that many staff quarantined, you have absolutely no, you know.
You have no wiggle room.
No one can take their accrued leave for the holidays. No one can be sick otherwise, you know, you can't absorb any of that.
Right, okay. Any other questions or discussion on this topic?
I just have one point, I mean, just as we do move forward, just to extend off of your point earlier. I think having, you know, a recommendation from Jason regarding reopening based upon some framework, be it a, you know, percentage of, historical percentage of staff availability, something of that nature, it could be helpful for the board to make the decision to keep moving forward. But I do think it is prudent to go on a month-to-month basis.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments, suggestions, discussion on this topic? Okay, hearing none. So Jason, you're asking the requested action would be to continue this current policy of expanded curbside delivery until January 18th, that the board would review it on January 12th. Is there a motion with regard to agenda item 2119? Anybody?
I'm motioning.
I was trying to give someone else a chance.
I know, thank you, Renee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, TJ. Okay, hearing a first and a second, is there any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving agenda item 2119, which would be continuing the expanded curbside delivery model until January 18th, with authority for any additional rollback of services being delegated as outlined in policy E465, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion passes. And that, I believe, is all that I have on the agenda item, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is that Joanne?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn by Joanne, is there a second?
I'll second, Georgianne.
Thanks, Georgianne. Okay, hearing a first and a second, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody stay safe and healthy.
Okay, happy holidays.
Yeah, you too.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Okay, take care.
Good job.